Let's call a meeting to order. We're all present except for Berwin. He will be absent this evening. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of March the 19th, 2019, known as 19-19.
Bill, I do have one question regarding, on the claims list. In the Water Capital Improvement Fund, we have eight items on there where we're paying damages. And I was just curious about what precipitated that, or who is, how, what that amounts to.
Chris? Yes, I can address that, sir. What we have done is, as we go through and acquire easements for the Call Lake program, after they've signed the easement documents and we've worked on that, then we sit down and go over the amount of damages that we anticipate to happen, based on taking out fences, trees, croplands, things like that.
So these are anticipated damages. These are not damages that have already occurred?
These are damages that we know will occur.
Okay.
So we're paying them up front.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it had something to do with that, or existing water easements.
No, no, this is upfront. What this allows us to do is allows us to identify in writing what's anticipated to be damaged and how it has to be restored. So as the construction guys come along, they'll know, and our inspectors will know, this is what you have to put back before we'll let you go on to the next property.
Have any of these people protested the amount that we arrived at, that not being sufficient?
If we're sending them checks for damages, they have signed the easements.
Okay.
So they have not protested.
Is it an easement, or is it a separate surface damage agreement?
These are separate surface damages.
And how's that different?
Well, the easement is actual for the permanent easement that we're going to maintain and hold on to for perpetuity. The temporary easement that we're going to do our construction work on.
Right, okay.
And then the damages, which is what's listed in there, is what we're going to tear up while we're doing that.
We're not anticipating any ongoing damages, then?
No.
Chris, are we going to do that on all the properties?
Yes, sir.
All 270?
200, right now the count's 227 parcels.
Okay, great.
And it's going to fluctuate as we go along until we get it finalized. But yes. And, you know, to be honest with you, I anticipate that there will be a couple of properties as we actually get going through there and doing construction, that we'll have overlooked something, and we'll have to provide compensation for that as well.
Does one of our people make this determination, or have we hired somebody to do this?
We have hired Smith Roberts Land Services through Garver to do, to talk to the landowners, and they have guidance on some of the things that we're willing to do, and what standard is. And they also know very much what the rule of thumb is.
But they make the determination of the amount of damages?
They make a determination, they submit it to us, we review it and approve it, it's approved through Garver, engineering, finance, and then finally gets signed out.
Most of them that I sign are in the 10,000 to 13,000 dollar range.
Yes, sir.
Get your pencils from George. Sign every one of them.
It's the fun part.
Does that address that?
Yep. All I need, no thank you.
Anyone else? Item three, present update on the Call Lake Water Supply project. Chris, Michael.
Okay, once again, we're going to give you a little brief update. Not a lot has happened since the last time we talked to you, but we'll give you an update on where we're at. Michael?
Thanks, Chris. And he did already kind of dive into some of the general details that we were going to talk about tonight, and that is easement acquisition update. We'll talk also about the construction manager at risk schedule and selection process, and just give you an update on where we're at in that regards. Guys are familiar with the overall project footprint, and that we have eight different pipeline segments. They all have, in addition to a number, they have a unique name identifier associated with them as well. Before I jump into the land acquisition update, though, I want to talk a little bit about surveying, topographical survey of the pipeline, and just give you a real brief update on that. We are on schedule to finish all the survey tasks, with the exception of just a few parcels that we're still gaining access to by the end of May. Again, on schedule for that. The topographical survey is complete for projects four through eight. One is on this end, eight is on that end, and so the topo survey is complete on four through eight. And we're post-processing that survey data so that we can use it for design elements for projects six and eight. Project six and eight post-processing is complete. Public access, utility locates, this is where we need access to property in order to identify any utilities that might be in the way of the pipeline if they're so indicated. We want to actually put hands on those by locating those. We call it pot-holding process, where we find that utility line. Utility access locates complete for projects four, six, and eight, again focusing on the eastern side. And we have received the go-ahead to start now in Osage County with segment seven as well. And finally, we are on schedule to provide the 30% plans updated, which is based on this survey data, by the end of July with the ground profiles and all the identified utilities completed on those plans as well.
Michael, before you go on, what happened at the E and R on Meridian? By the county line?
What happened?
Keep going up, down. The green?
Oh, right there? Is that the landfill, Raleigh? Yes, there's a, there's a, there's a...
I thought you were saying it was misspelled.
Yeah. Well, I thought, I thought something totally different than that. I won't say what I thought.
Somebody got nervous with the green.
There's an existing landfill that's out there at that location, and we are, we do not want to exposure pipeline to those conditions, so we don't jog around it. Okay, land acquisition update. There are approximately 227 parcels impacted by the current alignment of the raw water line from Call Lake to the city of Enid. Let's start down here. Of those 227 parcels, six, these are, these numbers are constantly changing, by the way. I mean, they have changed since I prepared this slide last week. I'll tell you a little bit about that as we go around the circle here. Of the 227 parcels, 61% of those are in a stage that we identify as offer packets are in preparation. So of the 227, 67% of those are in offer packet preparation stage. Currently, 9% of those 227 are in the stage identified as developing the notice of intent. And this is really kind of where the city gets a chance to kind of review that offer, and as Chris just talked about earlier, and ultimately get it routed for signatures and such. 9% of the 227 are currently in that step. 24% of the 227 have been made. Offers have actually been made to landowners, and as of last week, 6% of the 227 parcels we have received or have been accepted, those offers have been accepted by the landowners.
Do we give them some kind of time limit on accepting the offer?
Not, 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 not really, it's not real stringent. It's a negotiation process, and we're sympathy to, you know, sympathetic to their schedule and try to work around their demands. But this number went to 10% today. So we have now secured 10% of the 227 affected parcels. So it's pretty dynamic. It changes, changes daily, so just wanted to give you a snapshot as of late last week. Also wanted to present to you updated schedule for the program. This is the first time that the Commission has seen a completion date, or commissioning date, that is beyond the end of 2022. We have basically inserted the construction manager selection process, the development of the cost opinion, and the guaranteed maximum price component of the construction manager at risk process, and that has required us to shift the baseline schedule out into the late spring of 2023. Some key milestones here that I think are important and we should keep in focus is now going the construction manager. We are attempting to establish that guaranteed maximum price by January 17th, '20, which flanges up really well with the March OWRB board meeting for loan closure on the construction phase, and then commencing construction July 10th, 2020. More specifically, the schedule for, for the construction manager at risk, note here that March 5th through the 25th of 2019, the activities there are advertised for the construction manager at risk through a request for qualifications process. City has prepared that RFQ and distributed that RFQ to a couple of dozen different construction managers, as well as publicly advertising. I think you're continuing to get calls from construction managers due to the public advertisement of this, of this opportunity for C-MAR. The next phase, once all of those RFQs are received, there'll be a review and evaluation and ranking process that the city staff will go through. That will wrap up sometime in mid-April. At that point, the city intends to shortlist about half a dozen construction managers to take through the next step of the selection process, and that next step is the request for proposals. This is different than the qualification step. This will be an opportunity to do a little deeper dive on the contractors, not just their qualifications, but how they intend, how they intend to deliver this program to the city of Enid. We'll give the shortlisted construction managers about a month to prepare their proposals, and then again, the city staff will evaluate those proposals. There will probably, I don't want to speak for the city, but I would anticipate that there would probably be some interviews of some of the shortlisted construction managers, and then after that interview process, the, an award, a selection would be made. Once the best qualified firm, construction firm is identified, this Commission should expect the first phase of their contracting to be before you sometime in June of this year. That would secure them under contract to begin developing the third-party independent cost opinion of the program. And if that goes well, then there would be an amendment to their contract to engage them to work with us between the 30% design and the 60% design, and then that third amendment for them would be to actually secure them with a guaranteed maximum price. Yes, Mayor?
I saw somewhere where the estimated cost was 1%. What's that 1% multiplied by?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And I've seen those reports as well, and I don't think, I'm not sure that I reported 1% from this podium in the past. We did, we did look at what the anticipated fees for these construction managers would be, and that is anticipated to be 1% of the overall program cost.
Of the 315?
But that's an unnegotiated fee. That's a, that's an estimate, and it's just a budget number at this point.
It's in there somewhere. It's the difference between 315 and if it were 200 million.
That's right, yeah.
Big dollars.
So, and finally, with regard to the C-MAR update, the requests for qualifications were issued on March 4th, as the schedule indicated, was publicly advertised. About 20 firms received these solicitations, and more have reached out as a result of the publications. And requests for proposals are actually in development as we speak. We have an addendum that went out today with the RFQ to address some of the comments and questions the construction managers had.
And one of the things that that addendum has done is that moved that response date back to the 1st of April. There was enough interest in providing, in asking for a little more time, and as far as I'm concerned, it's important to do this right, and we're not, it's more important to be right than in a hurry, so take it to the 1st of April.
That's all we have for our update this evening. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, discuss the updated Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA federal insurance rate map, and review the accounting floor plan ordinance. Raleigh?
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioner. This is the update on damage prevention ordinance. There are three, three items are addressed in this update ordinance. One is the new, we are, it needs to be adopted, the new form map, and there is a little bit language cleanup, and there is a clarifying, clarification on the fencing and access permit. Form map, form map is a flood insurance rate map. This has been adopted in 1979, and this allows residents to purchase a federal flood protection insurance, and this is a 1% chance of a flood map. It regulates, and the last update of these maps were 2012, and there is a new update that's newly been adapted, requires adopt in 2019, June. The new maps were presented back in September 18, and the two major changes were, there are two study areas. One is in the Meadow Lake Tributaries and the West Boggy Creek. And, yep, this is the current map, and here is the Meadow Lake Tributaries. This is the new study area, and this is the West Boggy Creek. This is the new study area, and here is a 412 and 81 right here, just for the reference. And this is the new updated map. Here is, you see, like, this is a dark red color. That's where the new study area, and if you see, like, light blue, that used to be a unstudied area after the study, some areas been reduced, and this is the West Boggy Creek area. That's a new study area. And fencing and access changes. The new ordinance allows to install fence outside the floodway, parallel to the floodway. The other one is, it limits the requirement for engineering on residential steps and ramps in the flood area. And these are some of the key dates. The next action item needs to be required is by the Commission. The new ordinance needs to be adopted by June 7th, 2019. That's all. Any questions?
I do have a, the fencing question, the puzzles moving, what are they talking about fencing? Are you talking about you can't fence in this area, or you have to fence the area off, or what? I didn't read the whole agreement.
The current ordinance says there is a lot more study required by anybody wants to install it, but the new one, we have some guidelines on how much opening area required, so they don't have, like, a detailed study done by an engineer. If somebody wants to install a fence in the flood plain.
You have to get a permit related to this?
That's right.
And that would apply even to residential property?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
So the current ordinance, like, current updates, we have some guidelines, how much opening spaces and stuff like that, so that resident can apply through those opening spaces.
What happens on June the 7th?
So the new, new ordinance needs to be adopted, so the, these maps will go in effect.
Are there any problems? 100% sure?
Yep.
Good. Any other questions? Is there a dollar amount for that study for?
This is done by the federal government, so.
And we basically just take their results and adopt it?
Yes, sir. And I can see some dates. FEMA had a public notice period. They were here, they taking all the comments and stuff like that, and submitted for acknowledgement.
When will this come up again? Is it annually?
The last one is in 2012, so it's been seven years ago.
Seven years?
Yeah. I don't know, next time.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, we adjourn, meet upstairs at 6:30.
We have a question.
Just Mayor number five.
Proposed budget calendar.
I got the six in there, didn't I? Item five.
He's anxious to get out of here yet.
Nobody wants to talk about it.
Yeah, nobody wants to talk about the budget either.
Discuss the 2019, 2020 proposed budget calendar. Sorry, I didn't mean to overlook you.
That's okay. Everyone's very excited. It's that time of year again, so.
Well, three of us aren't that excited.
That's right.
Go ahead.
So we are going to talk about a proposal, or a proposed budget schedule. First, we're going to talk about the requirements.
Maybe not.
It's not working. The Municipal Budget Act is where we get these guidelines from the state statutes. So we have to present to the governing body 30 days prior to the fiscal year. We have a budget hearing that allows public to speak, and that has to be 15 days prior to the new fiscal year. The budgeting hearing advertisement, of course, for the city clerk's office, and we have to have it approved seven days before the new fiscal year. We usually push that back since our resolutions take 30 days to take effect, so that's why we usually do that in May on the approval instead of wait until June. So this is our tentative budget schedule. We have, we will be distributing both hard copy and electric versions to you by the 26th of April, and we are proposing two special sessions on the 2nd and 9th. They're both Thursdays, and then we will have the additional discussion on Tuesday and hold the, hold the budget hearing on the 6th, and that is a Monday, and that's the regular council meeting. I think it was actually a special one also. And the reason for that is the following week is the DC trip, and May 8th, I believe, is on the 7th. So that's kind of been a reason for moving it. And then we have a tentative budget approval for May 21st at the regular meeting.
That one's on the 6th. It's also because the new, that when you seat the new council members, they have to be done on the first Monday and May.
Right, right.
So that's when that all happened, right?
That is when all that will happen, yes. It's not the 1st of May, like some people were thinking. It's actually the first Monday.
So we have, we have to, only have one budget meeting.
That's bloody.
So those of us that are going off will be voting on the 26th of April and the 2nd of May?
Yep. Right. Our first schedule option is for the Thursday meetings to be from 11 to 1:00 p.m., and then if obviously there's too many that can't make those, we can change those to the 5 to 7 on the Thursdays.
So that'll be the first budget meeting, 26th of April is the, just the?
Yeah, we'll make sure that you have them distributed, and then our first meeting will be Thursday, the 2nd.
So at what point do we decide on the schedule? Are we voting on that tonight, or?
I think probably if you have a problem with times, I mean, this is the, this is the set that we have right now. If there's too many, that's going to miss. I'm assuming you probably email Mr. Gilbert and Ms. Crawford, and then we'll have to send you new dates to possibly look into that.
Are the new commissioners in, are they going to be asked to come to that May 2nd meeting?
I would think that we would be inviting them.
Because wouldn't it make sense to just, wouldn't it make sense to just move that and just let them start from the beginning?
Well, that, just because of the DC trip, that means that all of the meetings would be crammed into that one week, so.
That's how we did it the first year we were here.
But that's definitely something, I'll let, I'll let Erin know, and Mr. Gilbert.
I remember we did it, like, every day for a while.
I think Tammy has a good point.
I mean, there's not any point in us coming to one meeting, because we're not going to be involved in any of the voting anyway, really.
You mean you don't want one more nostalgic budget meeting?
I mean...
Just one more last hurrah, arguing about CDPG?
Because you want me to come give my opinion one more time?
Oh, no, that's...
I've got some things about the budget I'd like to throw in.
I mean, I would, I have plenty of opinions about the budget, but I just, I mean, I def... When we've done it before, the new people weren't involved until after they were seated, and it, it makes it really hard on new people to just come in and vote on the budget. And I know that's the way they've always done it, but I think it's always been dumb, but, so I at least think they need to be at least included in that first one if we're...
Normally, the Washington DC trip is in March or April.
It's usually earlier, yeah. It's usually in April.
Right, usually in April, and then we have no problems with the first couple of weeks of May.
I agree with Tammy.
Okay, I will, I will take that back.
I think the new people definitely should be invited to that second meeting if nothing else.
Yeah.
I think you, I think you need to move it back, or ahead, whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
There's no reason for the three of us that are going off to vote on the budget for the next 365 days.
Well, no one's voting until the 21st.
It's just the meetings, but...
Yeah.
And that's, that's tentative also.
Still awkward.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Right. Okay, I have a note to let them know that we need to move that time.
At each one of the meetings, they try to cover a different discrete portion of the budget.
Correct.
So the new people would miss out on whatever that first third is, so I think it makes sense to let them.
We don't give them, it doesn't matter where you're at.
So we have three meetings for actual discussion set, and if we move those till later, that, that's fine. There might be another special meeting obviously called for, for the new inductees. So as of right now, the first overview is just going to be the operational type budgets for departments and a few of the funds, a few smaller of the funds, and I believe that's, that's similar to the schedule that we had before. The budget hearing, of course, would be on May 6th for sure, and then we have the remaining funds that we discuss of their operational type budgets. Airport, and then all the police funds, and fire, and community development block grant and the EEDA. And then our third night, we'll talk about the capital improvement plan, and engineering staff will be presenting that CIP review. And that's all of our capital improvement funds that we talk about with all the big projects.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
You can come back and hang out if you want. Jennifer, did you need to get some sort of consensus on whether to do it at lunch or in the evening?
I, I would assume if anybody has any problem with the lunch, they need to let them know, because that's right now where we're scheduling. Of course, we're going to have to change it from, it sounds like, the first Thursday, so.
I can tell you now, I'm going to be hard-pressed to, you know, to do that many lunches in such a compressed amount of time for a two-hour time block. In fact, I still work a nine-to-five, so.
We'll vote twice, we'll vote twice for you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think I had a conflict in one of those days, but I'll email Gerald.
I feel like that first year, we had like 10 meetings or something. We had so many days.
They used to be a lot longer and more days.
Yeah, we had like 10, we had like 10 weeks.
And they were lengthy.
Yeah, they were painful.
All day sometimes. We had three straight days. That's been several years ago, but...
They were long.
Special kind of hell.
And then we had evenings that were just like three straight evenings also. So we tried to change that up a little bit, so it's just not...
Appreciate that.
It is better that way.
Since the operational things, I mean, those are just the daily things, but the big night is our lovely engineering presentation for the CIP, so.
To me, it's even more awkward if you have two or three commissioners there for the May 6th meeting. They won't even, they won't even have gotten situated in their seats before they have to start looking at the budget.
That's what happened to us.
That's what happened to us, though, our first year. We got put in and then ran into budget.
Still awkward.
Yeah, it's hard, it makes it really hard, I don't know why they do it that way.
And it, it is difficult, I've been to many, many budget conferences that several towns talk about that, that you're sitting there just dropping this in their lap as soon as they're, they take office and... But for those that the fiscal year starts July 1st, that just kind of happens since the state statute is...
Yeah, that's true.
Specific on when they take office.
Almost everything has three more zeros in it. Most people are used to.
So this is where I'm asking if you go ahead and just email them if you have a problem with your lunchtimes or moving it till after the new officers take office, so. Any other questions?
Good job, good luck. We are now to item six. Thank you. We are adjourned, we'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enitv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid.org.